All right, we do have a quorum of our Board of Trustees. And it is now 6:47 PM. I'm going to call this regular meeting, I guess, of the Board of Trustees of the City Employees Retirement Fund and the Board of Trustees of the Police and Firemen's Pension Fund. For the record, today is Monday, August 5th, 2024. And we have members of both boards participating via Zoom and in person. Representing the City Council in person, I have Councilwoman Iveyne, Councilwoman Spino, Councilwoman Ruette, and Councilman Waldron participating via Zoom. And representing the Board of Safety, I have Safety Member, Commissioner Greg Hogswell, Commissioner Joe McGilroy. What's do I have? That's it. All right. So those are the board members present. And with that, I will, before we get into the agenda, ask that we stand and pledge the flag. All right. So item number one on the agenda this evening is, I need a motion by the Board of Trustees of the City Employees Retirement Fund and the Board of Trustees of the Police and Firemen's Pension Fund to approve the minutes of the regular joint meeting, which was held on June 17, 2024.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item two. At this point, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Chris Cashmer from Fiduciian Advisors to make a presentation on the respective pension funds. Oh, there you are.
Good evening, folks. Good to see everyone. Let me see if we can Heather get orchestrated here with the... We're just going to hit the highlights as we typically do. Oh, it looks like we're good. Great. Well, again, good evening. Good to see everyone, as always. We'll spend, as we typically do, just a couple of minutes giving you some context around what's going on in markets year-to-date. I think, as you probably are all well aware, the last couple of days have been more difficult than most of the year was. And we'll talk for a couple of the reasons around that and the whys associated with that. And then we'll get you caught up on performance for the two plans, the two pension plans through June and where they stand. It was good fiscal years for both of the plans with nice gains. And then we'll just spend a couple of, maybe a quick minute on OPEB Trust as well and get you caught up on that scenario through June as well. So as we do each quarter, one quick thing, just from a governance standpoint, you'll remember, in addition to all of the reporting and monitoring and work we do, working with Dan and the team on the pension plans themselves, we have other responsibilities, fiduciary responsibilities associated with those asset pools. And this is the quarter you'll see on the page here, where we just want to very quickly reassure the commissions, the boards, that the expense associated with the programs is appropriate. And then we'll spend just a second on liquidity as well. So you see an exhibit here, and this applies to both of the pension plans. Investment expenses, you can all appreciate it, by and large, is the largest carry or expense associated with administering the two plans day-to-day. So what we show you on this exhibit, when you look across the entirety of your investment managers that are deployed in both of the programs, they charge on a weighted basis a little bit less than one-half of 1%. If you see that number at the top of the exhibit, we call it 46 basis points, but think of it as a little bit less than one-half of 1%. And when we look at the complexion of your program, the type of managers that are being used, the type of strategies that are incorporated into the two portfolios, from our standpoint, that's an entirely reasonable and appropriate cost. And you'll remember, as Tony probably described in the past, we report net of those fees. So when we look at some of your performance numbers momentarily, they are net of those investment expenses. But just an assurance to the boards that, from an expense standpoint, we think that the programs are in good working order. No concerns on our part in terms of those numbers or figures. And then I'll jump ahead here quickly. So this is a busy page, market themes page. I'm not going to spend a ton of time here. The takeaway for the boards, as you all know, the narrative this year-to-date around investing in markets has been if and when the Fed is going to do anything with interest rates and the general state of the economy. And you'll see in the upper left-hand corner of the page here, the Fed has made really good progress on the inflation front. But as you've probably read, its numbers are not quite at the level they want just yet. They'd like a lower number than the 3.3% you see there. And that has created a little bit of hesitancy in terms of them being willing and able to reduce interest rates. And I think we'll talk in a second. That dynamic has changed over the last couple of days. But nonetheless, inflation, they've made good headway on that front. You know, the other thing in the takeaway in terms of this page in the lower right-hand corner, we'll talk about the actual returns, of course, in a minute. Just a reminder, it's been several quarters running, and it existed in the second quarter as well. Good returns for equities generally around the world, particularly good returns for U.S. equities, even better returns for large companies in the U.S. as well. You've probably all read about AI, Nvidia, Microsoft, Meta, those type of names. They have been, until very recently, leading those performance roles. And that continued to be the case in the second quarter. So just from a thematic standpoint, that gives you a little bit of context about what's going on. And then the other thing here, we're not going to spend a ton of time as well, but if you looked at the totality of these four graphics, it really tells a story that the economy is beginning to soften a little bit. You look at things like the growth of GDP. In the upper-left-hand corner of the page, it's starting to roll over. As you saw on Friday, unemployment rates are beginning to creep up a little bit. Some of the surveys around manufacturing and services are starting to soften. If you combine that backdrop on the economy, where we are with inflation, investors have been very, really enthusiastically anticipating, right, a rate cut. And that's what's really bolstered markets for the first half of the year, not so much the last two days, right? Because now the numbers are getting even a bit softer, and now you're starting to see investors with a very different reaction, right? And that's a concern that maybe a more meaningful slowdown is in the offing. We don't think that's the case necessarily, but clearly what you've seen with equity markets over the last couple of days, that's what's been priced in. So that's the backdrop. More importantly, what did it mean in terms of returns? This is a busy graphic, I know, but we'll focus on just a couple of numbers on the top half of the page here. If you look in the upper-left-hand corner, you'll see three columns in from the left, the broad fixed income markets here in the U.S., what we call core bonds. Interestingly enough, look there, year-to-date through June, they're actually down a little bit. See that seven-tenths of a percent? Remember the backdrop for fixed income investing the first half of the year? Interest rates were moving higher, again, until very recently. That, you'll remember, is a headwind for bond returns when interest rates move higher. So that has been not on the page here, but interestingly enough, July was actually a very, very good month for bonds. And we'll see that in your numbers, I suspect, when we report third-quarter results. And then I'll stop just quickly with one last comment. In the middle of the page there, you'll see the gray bars. Those are the global equity markets, right? So you see large-cap here in the U.S., as we talked about, being the leader, up over 14% through June. And you see small-cap next to that, and then some of the international markets. Positive returns, just not quite at the pace of the big U.S. names. That, again, just to give you a kind of a preview, in July, it was a pretty violent rotation. Large-cap stocks in July were up about 1%. Small-company stocks, which you have exposure to, as you know, in the programs, up about 10%. So you did see that a little bit of a reversal there in the month of July. Any questions on big-picture stuff, economy, the Fed, returns generally? Stop me if something comes up, for sure. Let's forge ahead here, and we'll look at actual performance for the two portfolios, which I know is what you're more interested in. On page 18 here, we'll start with the Employee Plan. So you'll see at the end of June, about $45 million of invested assets. The portfolio, as you would expect, if you look at the allocation column in the middle and the target allocations, pretty darn close, right? Right on top of one another by design. So the portfolios remain, or this portfolio remains very nicely diversified. All of the managers you see listed in the left-hand column there on the far-left banner, in good working order from a due diligence standpoint. And the research team that we've got employed on your behalf, obviously, re-underwrites those managers, as you recall, every quarter. And no concerns, from our standpoint, on any of the managers mid-year. Police and Fire shares the same lineup, as you all know, shares the same allocation from a target standpoint. And by and large, you see there, again, allocations that are pretty darn close to target. So no concerns from an allocation standpoint. Just a touch shy of $79 million of invested assets for Police and Fire. And then in terms of performance, you'll see, I'll start in the upper-left-hand corner. I won't go through each and every one of these numbers, of course, but you see year-to-date for the two plans, up about 5% or thereabouts. Little bit behind the benchmarks, but nothing that we think will persist. And if you're interested, we can talk a little bit for some of the reasons why a couple of managers had difficult quarters. But again, nothing that rises to a level of concern or inaction just yet. And then you see, from a fiscal year standpoint, the one-year numbers ending in June. Third column in from the left, again, upper-left corner, 11, 11.4%, you know, for the plans respectively. Pretty good performance, as you all know. And remember what we're trying to do here long-term, right? We've got an actuarial bogey of 6.34%, and we're trying, right, to build a program. That doesn't mean every quarter, every year, it's going to be that exact number. We all know that. With the benefit of time, over markets, long-market cycles, that's our expectation. And you see your since-inception numbers there in the upper-right-hand corner of the page. No surprise, right, kind of dovetail or outpace that actuarial target by a bit, which, of course, is what our intentions are. So good numbers for both of those programs. I'll translate them quickly, just so you have the numbers. For the Employee Plan, that was about a $4.6 million investment gain for the one-year period ending in June. Police and Fire, we were just shy of an $8 million investment gain, a $7.9 million gain for Police and Fire over that same period. So I will stop and pause there. See if folks have any questions, concerns.
Just curiosity, is this the model that you're using? Do all similar-sized municipal governments use?
Looks very, very similar. Yep. So I would tell you, is it to the dollar allocated precisely like each and every other of your municipalities? Not to the dollar, but they certainly rhyme. The allocations, by and large, are similar. The list of managers that you see here, kind of our high-conviction managers, you'd see across our practice as well. So you do look very similar from an allocation standpoint.
Just when I look down to fix the income strategy, I'm just imagining there's a lot of overlap between some of these strategies. So can you explain allocation between them?
Sure.
Knowing that there is some overlap there and, you know, not understanding the model completely. I'm just, if you could just say?
Great question. So that's on page 20 here, is a great place to start. So each of the managers, we kind of, there's a role for each, and they go about achieving their objectives slightly differently. So if we kind of start top to bottom, right? You see, we've got the small allocation to the fidelity strategy. Inflation has been elevated, right? No surprise that having a measure of explicit inflation protection in your program, we think continues to make sense. Inflation is still a bit sticky and unsettled, so we're not prepared yet to take that position off. So remember, they have a dedicated focus, and they only invest in Treasury Inflation-Protective Securities. The Vanguard Total Bond Index, remember, is just what it is as described. It's not actively managed in the sense that they're trying to beat the index, trying to match the index at a very low cost. And you see, over time, they've basically done that. And we do that to offset some of the active managers that are a bit more expensive in the form of Dodge and Cox and the BlackRock strategy. So again, by design, right, we're sensitive to cost. We're sensitive to what we call a tracking error, how differently your program looks than the broad markets. That Vanguard Index kind of drags us back to what the profile of the broad markets are, different than the two other active managers on the page here, Dodge and Cox, right, which we've given authority to make bets on where they think the best opportunities are. And you see, over time, they've been very successful versus the broad markets when you look at their returns doing that. And then you'll remember, the BlackRock strategy is kind of a bit different. Flexible fixed income, as we label it and call it. And from our standpoint, it gives the manager much broader, a much broader footprint than even Dodge and Cox to do things. And a strategy that typically does very, very well when interest rates are moving higher or unstable. And look at the one-year number there, right? You can see it was the best performing of your fixed-income managers. And again, by design, right? We want complementary managers that can all participate in a variety of different markets. When you swedge it all together, right? The goal is, obviously, incrementally to generate those slightly better returns. And I think, over time, that group has done that pretty consistently.
Thank you.
Anything else from members? Folks okay? Okay, good. Maybe Heather will switch quickly to OPEB and just catch the boards up on that. So remember, a little bit of a different design here, as you all know. The OPEB is a much smaller fund. Just right, you've got it up and running, which is great, right? And it'll build over time with the markets. And we're not going to spend any time on the markets because we've talked about those already. So I'm going to cut to the chase here very quickly and get you caught up just on the actual dynamics of the fund itself. So here's the OPEB Trust, upper-left-hand corner. You can see, actually, a very nice year-to-date and a nice one-year number for OPEB. We only have $1,008,000, but it's growing again. And good performance here, as you can see, over time. We're not going to see incremental returns yet in this structure, right? Because it's all indexed. The intention is just to use the Vanguard strategies, very low cost. Let the portfolio, or what we call the corpus, grow a little bit. And then, over time, we can think about maybe beginning to introduce some active management. But great performance for the program over the last year. No concerns there. You see in the upper-right-hand corner of the page for the one-year period, about a $223,000 investment gain generated by the fund. And then, just as a final reminder for the boards, you'll see there, here on page 14, just the very simple, but to-date, very effective approach with this pool, right? We've got some broad bond index exposure, some domestic equity, and then a little bit of international equity for diversification purposes. And kind of tracking entirely consistent with expectation based on what's going on in the markets.
Very different lineup on here, and it seems more conservative than the first one.
The allocation's the same, right? So if you look at the target column, we're about 65% in equities, global equities, 35% fixed income. That mimics essentially, not precisely, but mimics what you've got in the pension plans. The difference here is just in implementation initially, right? We're very smaller balance. Let's get it in the markets. Let's get it growing. Let's not burden it yet with active management expense just yet. And over time, as it continues to grow with market activity, then we can maybe start to look at some active managers to complement what you've got in the program today.
Okay. Thank you.
That is OPEB. I know you've got a long night and lots of agendas, and I've probably overstayed my welcome, but...
Doubt it.
Folks okay with the update?
I have a question.
Oh, sure.
What is OPEB and who's in it?
I'm sorry?
What is it and who's in it?
What is it?
Yeah, I don't know who it belongs to.
Yeah, Dan, jump in here as well. So the OPEB Trust is...
Other post-employment benefits. This is the trust that provides the insurance coverages for retirees.
Yeah. So this is intended to provide funding for those obligations over time.
And forever? We've really been on a pay-as-you-go system, and you're in our annual budget. You would see those contributions being made. About nine years ago, we, after creating the trust, determined that now we really had to put a little skin in the game, and we had to start making contributions. And while they are very modest contributions on an annual basis, you could already see the benefit of having done that.
Yeah. And to the town, the city's credit, right? It's great that you formed the trust. There are some beneficial accounting treatments and other things you get by virtue of forming the trust in the way that the actuaries view it and whatnot. So it's great that you've got it up and running. And again, at a time-over-grow, and then we'll look to change it up a little bit when it's got some size to it.
Chrissy, in your first deck of slides on page nine, you have a funded ratio. One of City of Torrington Employee Pension Plan, and one is City of Torrington Pension and Fire. Very different funding ratios, 81.5% and 65.4%. Any concerns here on the funded ratios?
Yeah. So I would, you know, I'd really, we get this directly from the actuary, right? So it's, we don't, as you know, we don't calculate these numbers. These are just kind of, you know, guideposts for us in talking to you from an asset allocation standpoint. So I would be remiss, I think, if I tried to give you an answer on the difference between the two and the pace that you funded obligations over the years and whatnot. I would tell you, just in a broadest, the broadest sense, as you all know, we work with 40 or 50 of your peer communities around the state, that from a return expectation standpoint, at 6.34%, you have a very reasonable expectation there. And I think your actuary would tell you that he doesn't have any wholesale concerns with that. And then honestly, I think that your funded ratios as well are pretty competitive with what we see statewide. You know, they can range, you know, we see many communities that have lower funded ratios than this. But, you know, 65 and over 80% respectively, you know, I think puts you in pretty good company statewide.
Okay. Thank you. I'm just assuming the populations are different.
Yeah. It could be the demographics of the two plans, right? And I don't know what type of, you know, whatever contractual obligations the two plans are under to fund their liabilities and whatnot. It can be a little bit different. Again, the actuary would be, give you a more eloquent answer than that.
Okay. Thank you again.
Anything else?
No other questions? All right.
All right. Well, great. Thanks for your time tonight. Enjoy the rest of the summer.
Thank you.
We'll see you soon.
All right. We have a little business for the board members to conduct this evening. I'm going to move into item three. This is for the Board of Trustees of the City Employees Retirement Fund. This is AFSMI, Council Four, Local 2212. These are the City Hall employees. Item three, I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective March 9, 2024, for Nancy Mishna, Senior Account Clerk for the City of Torrington Finance Department after 17 years of service.
So moved.
Thank you. Councilwoman Iveyne, seconded by Councilwoman Cavanaro. Are there questions or comments on the calculation?
No.
Then I'll call this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item four, the same board members, please. A motion to accept the pension computation effective July 1, 2024, for Lona Kirk, Senior Secretary for the City of Torrington Planning and Zoning Department after 30 years of service. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilwoman Iveyne. Questions on this calculation? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving into the Board of Trustees of the City's Employment Retirement Fund Management Resolution, this would be the City Council only. I will entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective May 7, 2024, for Rose Ponte, Economic Development Director of the City after seven years of service.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Iveyne, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item six, for the Board of Trustees of the Police and Firemen's Fund, AFSMI, Council 15, Local 442. This will be the Board of Safety members, Battalion Chief Sterling, Lieutenant Delisle. I'll entertain a motion to accept the revised pension calculation and retroactive payment effective April 15, 2024, for Brian Fox, Patrolman for the City of Torrington Police Department after 10.01 years of service. Do you have a motion?
I'm moved.
Yeah, I know. I just asked Heather before this. I said, usually, you look for the police officers to do it. But I know. Am I getting conflicting? What? We'll table it. Do you have a motion to table? All the board can vote on that.
So moved.
Oh, I'm sorry. Board of Safety and motion to table? Thank you from Lieutenant Delisle. Can I count on your second?
Second.
Thank you. So moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All right. Moving into item seven. Now, I think you guys can vote. I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective January 6, 2024, for Michael Zavikai, Lieutenant for the City of Torrington Fire Department after 27 years of service.
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Battalion Chief Sterling, seconded by Lieutenant Delisle. Questions or comments?
My food.
I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. I think I heard everybody. Any opposed? Item eight, I'll entertain a motion to accept the revised pension calculation and retroactive payment effective March 9, 2024, for Philip Hearn, Deputy Fire Marshal for the City of Torrington Fire Department after 26.06 years of service.
Make a motion.
Thank you. That from Battalion Chief Sterling and Lieutenant Delisle. Moved and seconded. Questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. There being no further business before this board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilwoman Iveyne. All in, yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. We're going to move right into the second meeting on tonight's lineup. This is the regular City Council and WPCA. For the record, it is now 7:15 PM. And we have council members present and attending in person. Councilwoman Cavanaro, Councilwoman Spino, Councilwoman Iveyne. Participating remotely, I have Councilwoman Waldron and Councilwoman Ruette. So that does present our quorum. We will jump into item number one. Actually, before I go into item number one, we do have some young people here present, if you'll indulge my taking moment. And I see we have Boy Scouts, is that Troop Three? Here for badge requirement? Can you share with the council what you're working on? Good communication. All right, and we have some young people here from our CAFTA organization, which I do have some citations that I'd like to present. So I don't know if Tom and Teresa, or John and Teresa, if you want to join me? We're actually trying to get another camera so that we don't have to look at the back of people when they're at this microphone. But, so a little history, we have representing CAFTA this evening, John and Teresa Sullivan. And this is your second year, third year of, yes. So I'm going to let them explain a little bit about what this program is, and then I have some citations for some of your participants.
CAFTA has a particular program that we call CHAO, which is CAFTA's Italian Arts Outreach Program. And originally it was funded by the Italian consulate in New York City to help students converse more readily. Not so much about grammar and conjugating verbs, things like that, but about getting them to speak. And so we've been doing this for five years, I think, yeah, at least five. And while we were doing it, we discovered that there was an international competition out of Agrogento, Sicily, which is on the southern shore of Italy, of Sicily facing Tunisia. It's about ninety miles from Tunisia, actually, I think. And this is where Luigi Perindello, who was the Italian Nobel Prize winner for literature in nineteen thirty-four, that's where he was born. And he obviously is, you know, a favorite son now, and the city has a huge competition, an international competition. And I think it's...
Well, this year, we had, there were eleven hundred and seventeen entrants from all over the world, two hundred and eighty-nine schools from nineteen countries. And our kids originally went into the top ten and eventually were in the top five. And that was for this year. We, we are so proud that our students have participated in this. It's a very, it's a very difficult competition because it is, it is a literary and academic, and our students are competing at a disadvantage because they don't, that's not their native language, and they're competing against Italian schools, that Italian language schools. And this, the play that they wrote, the original play that our students wrote this year, it was written, you know, in Italian with a philosophical standpoint, from a philosophical standpoint, where we had, they created a silent film where Perindello met Diogenes. And it was, it was really, really lovely and fun, and that's why they, why they proceeded as they did and...
Well, so one of, part of the backstory then is, so your students do this work and it gets recognized in the top ten, but to go further, they have to go there and present themselves. And this all happens very quickly. It's not in anybody's budget. And what's really been amazing this year in particular is that the City of Torrington, with the ARPA grant, came at the right time.
Eleven and a half hour.
Yeah, and allowed these students to fly to Italy with their chaperones, present themselves, and you all needed to see how amazing these young boys presented themselves. They were personable, they were eloquent, they were extremely well behaved, they had smiles on both sides of their faces.
Which are still there.
They met people from all over the world, they had, what, four or five days of non-stop? I mean, they were taken everywhere to the Greek temples, to Perindello's house, to just everywhere. And this is a great opportunity for them, and I wish they could come up and actually say what it means to them to not only have entered the competition and been highly recognized, but to actually have gone there. And I think, I think they would be more eloquent than I.
Yes, and it was truly a life-changing experience. So I just, I don't want to take up too much time. I know you have a big, big meeting, but, but once again, we really want to thank this group because without the mayor and without you all with the ARPA grant, this never would have happened for these, for these young people. That has, it's become a life-changing experience for them. So thank you so much.
All right, so I do have for the young men that did participate, if you want to come up, I have a citation for each of you. I am Matthias Heretic.
Thank you so much.
Trevor Luellen.
Thank you.
And we have Bobo Lueng. Thank you. I wasn't sure if the L was silent. So if you want to come here for just a quick photo op?
And I would just add, I did see some photographs, and I think the makeup artistry was transformational, making some young man look like a much older man.
That's so incredible. So congratulations, we greatly respect what you've done, and we're proud that we could have been a small piece of your history.
Thank you.
Your work. Okay, I have another surprise for you all, and this is something that you didn't expect. Congresswoman Johanna Hayes from the Fifth District of Connecticut is awarding you a special congressional recognition, presented to each of you in honor of the excellence at the Luigi Perindello International Contest Uno Nisuno Centomile in Agrogento, Sicily. You have proven that hard work, talent, and perseverance are values that yield great rewards with the creation of the original work nailed. Your involvement in filmmaking has distinguished you as a Critics' Choice Special Prize recipient. Guarantee, oh, sorry, I better put my glasses on because I might be able to read this picture. So one second. All right. Garnered the Certificate of Honor for your group's original script of the, by the Director General of Culture for Italy, and earned you top five placement in this international contest. These accolades are the result of your hard work and are points of pride for your friends, family, and community. Congratulations on your well-deserved success, whatever you do, never stop learning, asking questions, growing and challenging yourself to be better. Best of luck in your future endeavors. This is for Trevor. Congratulations. This is for Bobo. And Matthias, congratulations. Okay, so item number one, we still need to get to. So if I can have a motion to open the meeting to the public.
They're moved.
Thank you, Councilman Ivey. Seconded by Councilwoman Spino. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anyone else from the public wishing to address the council at this time? Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to move into item seven, I mean, item two, I don't know where seven came from. All right, I will entertain a motion to accept the public hearing and regular meeting minutes from July fifteen, twenty twenty-four. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilwoman Ivey. Any questions, comments on the minutes? Seeing and hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
And one abstention for the record, we have Councilman Kevin Arrow. All right, moving into item three. I'll take this in two parts. Three A, I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Debra Brown, who is serving in the role of neither tenant nor landlord for the Fair Rent Commission for a two-year term set to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilwoman Ivey. Questions or comments on the appointment or the recommendation? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three B, I'll entertain a motion to reappoint Kevin Hayes, who will stand in the role of landlord, and Donna Isley, who stands in the role of tenant to the Fair Rent Commission for a two-year term set to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
They're moved.
Second.
Thank you, I heard Councilman Ivey, and I heard Councilman Kevin Arrow. Questions or comments? A comment, please.
If these two are engaged in a contentious disagreement, is there a possibility that this City Council can be invited? Will we be made aware that we can attend?
So Fair Rent Commissions are open to the public? Absolutely, yes, yeah. And minutes are posted on the webpage also, so if you want to follow some of the...
They're both very strong.
They are very strong, yes, actually, like all of them are. So, of course, other questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item four, I'll entertain a motion, I'm going to do this again in two parts. Four A, I'll entertain a motion to approve the mayor's appointment of Susan Cook as a Commissioner of the Torrington Housing Authority to fill an existing vacancy set to expire August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and extend that for the additional five-year term, which would expire September one. No, we have a wrong date here. Oh, beginning September first, twenty twenty-four, I'm sorry. I was reading the motion too long and too late. So motion made by Councilwoman Spino. Do I have a second? Thank you, Councilman Kevin Arrow. Any questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four B, I'll entertain a motion to approve the mayor's appointment of John Solano as a Commissioner of the Torrington Housing Authority to fill an existing vacancy set to expire August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, I heard Councilman Waldron. Questions or comments on this recommendation? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the payment of twenty thousand eight hundred sixty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents from the city's ARPA funds to the housing collective for reimbursement of the hotel expenses that were paid to provide rooms for homeless residents between December fifteen, twenty twenty-three, and December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, as previously authorized by the council on December fourteenth, twenty twenty.
They're moved.
Thank you, Councilman Ivey. And seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Are there questions or comments? Hearing none? I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, acting as a water pollution control authority, I'll entertain a motion to approve the following payment from Fund Four-Ninety Sanitary Sewer Capital Improvement. This is invoice one seven zero eight to Yield Industries in the sum of seven thousand four hundred dollars.
They're moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Ivey. Questions or comments on the motion?
Just a question, what is an inside drop?
Do you want to help me explain the inside drop?
So, an inside drop on a sewer manhole is, you have your outlet pipe. If you think of a manhole as a barrel, vertical barrel, you have a manhole pipe outlet at the bottom, and an elevation change, you have a pipe that's much higher comes into the manhole, and then it's neck down, get into the inverted flow of the pipe that's on the bottom. So that would be an inside drop versus doing that outside the manhole.
Okay. So it's just, we're doing road construction and that's why you're installing in High Street because you're...
Yes, though the utilities went in, what we try always do is for the utilities to get in before we do a road reconstruction project, so ever source gas, water, aquarium water, and then obviously our own sanitary sewer.
Yeah. Is this a modification or is this just an upgrade for something that's aging out?
It was probably, it's highly likely it was aged out and needed replacement.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none? I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And just for the record, Councilwoman Ruette did have to sign off, but we do still have our quorum. All right, and moving into item number seven, I will entertain a motion to authorize a mayor to act on behalf of the city to award, execute, and administer a contract agreement for unlimited car washing, which includes twice yearly detailing services to Torrington Car Care DBA Platinum Car Wash of Torrington for the price of two hundred and fifty dollars per vehicle pending Board of Public Safety approval. Funding for these services will be from the multiple departments budget line items, as further explained in the purchasing agent's letter dated July one, twenty twenty-four. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
And second.
And seconded by Councilwoman Ivey. Questions or comments?
Just want to question, is this necessary? Have we, is this a practice we've done? And it's just a...
We have Mr. Castro here with us this evening to talk about that.
Yes, this is necessary for the integrity of the vehicles. We are following what the police department has been doing for the last two years.
Emil, could you pull the microphone close to you? I think we moved over. There you go.
Okay, no, we have, this is a needed practice. The police department has been doing this for the last two years with Platinum, and we want to follow in time with them. We wanted to piggyback off their contract, but their contract ended this year, so we all put all our vehicles into the same pool. The police department has the best integrity of their vehicles so far by using their, the Platinum contract, by being able to go in and get their vehicles washed two or three times a day at no extra cost. And this will, and put more integrity into our own vehicles as we go forward from this day forward.
Okay. No, there was a proposal during the budget cycle to address some of our city trucks, the snow plowing and all the, the road debris that gets on there. Is, any such services could be used by these car washes to address some of the city trucks?
Well, the city trucks cannot go through these car wash departments right now, but there is a program in place right now for us to do in-house washing for the, the bigger vehicles.
Okay.
And we were looking for a car, a truck wash, but we are now going for a under, under carriage wash right now for a third of the price, for about sixty thousand dollars to put within the facility itself.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Other questions for Emil?
Just the obvious, I mean, the estimate is eighteen thousand dollars for this? According to the notes I read, about eighteen thousand you estimate?
Excuse me?
Eighteen thousand dollars total?
Eighteen thousand. Eighteen thousand for basically every vehicle, and seventy-two vehicles.
Okay. And other cities use this same, do the same thing? I mean, is this generally, thirteen thousand dollars? I mean, that's a lot of car washing, and...
Well, you have to understand something, that we are losing a lot of our vehicles to rust because of the salt and everything that we use within the, within. We don't have a facility right now to house our vehicles inside of a building. We have all our vehicles out here within the City Hall itself that are just constantly outside in the elements. And when with that happening, all our vehicles are sustained to rust. If we can go and after a day's work, go through the car wash, we should be okay.
Well, prior to this practice, how are vehicles getting washed?
They weren't.
Oh.
So although...
Although they had the ability to come through the public waste department building and wash their vehicles if they wanted to, because we have a power wash system in our building, but this, this, it just hasn't really been used. And coming through there really was, slowed down the progress of what we're doing within that building. It's, it's...
Fire, doesn't the fire depart, I mean, is that just a long time ago when, when the new guys in the fire department are there, you know?
Well, the fire department guys do their own vehicles. I would have, I would have to say that.
Okay, so this is non-fire department? It's primarily police then, right? It's primarily police then, right?
No, the police is, are the ones that started this, started this program.
The usage would be primarily police cars.
No, it's going to be everyone. Buildings, engineering, everyone. Even the fire department. You know, for the smaller vehicles, not the big stuff. Okay. The small vehicles.
How, how long has the police been doing it?
From what I understand, for the least, the last two years, the contract was, is up this year, in July. June, actually.
Okay.
And so we piggybacked off of them.
A little bit too soon to realize the results, but you believe they'll just...
The results are very remarkable for the police, for the police department. I have no rush issues with them at all.
Wow, okay. So, you could see it, realize the results right away?
Yes, correct.
Good to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Emil. If there are no other questions or comments, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, I'll entertain a motion to authorize a mayor to act on behalf of the city to award, execute, and administer a contract agreement for on-call roof repairs and annual inspections to Eagle Rivet Roof Service Corporation of Bloomfield, Connecticut. The funding for these services will be from the multiple facility maintenance accounts, as further explained in the purchasing agent's letter dated August 5th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino. Second by Councilwoman Iveyne. Are there questions on this motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, I'll entertain a motion to award the purchase of the additional two RECOR video detection camera systems to Utility Communications, Inc. of Hampton in the amount of $43,354 pending Board of Public Safety approval. This purchase will be funded from the new equipment account, as further explained in the purchasing agent's letter dated August 1st, 2024.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Iveyne. Second by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments on the motion?
Question, Mayor.
Yes.
Was this expense anticipated?
Yes, it was budgeted for, yes.
I had thought that we had already approved these videos for a couple of different locations. Is that a different...
Different, yes. Yeah, these, the security cameras over different locations, particularly through ARPA funds, different than what these are. These are specific to the police department.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Seeing and hearing none. I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving into item 10, I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget transfer request for FY 2425, as further described in the manager of budgets letter dated July 29, 2024. This is pending Board of Finance approval.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Iveyne. Second by Councilwoman Spino. And the floor is open for questions. Hearing none. I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 11, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Building Department report for June 2024.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino. And second by Councilwoman Iveyne. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 12, I'll entertain a motion to release the liens listed in Corporation Council's August 5th, 2024 memo.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Spino. Second by Councilwoman Iveyne. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 13, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize tax refunds indicated on the list dated, excuse me, August 5th, 2024. Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron. Second by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 14, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize a sewer use refunds indicated on the list dated August 5th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Spino. Second by Councilwoman Iveyne. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 15, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
So moved.
Thank you. I heard Councilwoman Waldron. Second by Councilwoman Spino. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, to the room, anything from the Treasurers' Office, Mr. Freely?
Nothing there.
Anything to add from Public Works, Mr. Drew? Thank you. Facilities Director, anything, Jamie? No, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna let you get off that easy. Just if you want to just talk a little bit to the council about the award or the recommend, or the recognition?
So, we had EverSource come out and present us with an award. If you remember, the larger citywide energy project we did, so it hit their red flags of a, kind of a larger project. So they came out to recognize that we're saving energy, how we collaborated with them to tap into a lot of incentives and hit multiple, multiple buildings and do what they consider as a comprehensive project. Instead of just a one-and-done for lighting, we encompassed a lot. And where the, it was a sizable, you know, over $3,000 incentive that kind of really matters. So it was good to have that in the paper and, you know, finally in the positive light and doing good for the city, plus what it saves us. And we had EverSource run the numbers, and we're saving more than what they originally had projected we would save on that specifically, even just at the PD. So it was a big success all over. So.
Thank you, Jamie. Yeah. So whenever the council approves those kinds of requests that come, it is nice to see what the end result is and have it quantified and how it saves the taxpayers. So thank you, Jamie, for your...
Thank you for approving it.
Yeah. Is there more work to do on that front, to find efficiencies?
Yes. This is kind of, in my mind, just phase one of other things to come. The incentives and programs are ever-changing, so as they're coming out with new ones, we're trying to adapt on that. So we're in talks with and already working on a smaller-scale project in other departments, as well as new stuff that's coming out for 2025. So hoping to do a lot more and get more and more savings and lower our carbon footprint.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Mr. Castro, anything to add? You're good. Thank you. City Clerk's office? No. We had early voting today? We went, so what were the hours? We were open? We were open? 10 to 6. And there were three people that voted. And we won't talk about the cost. It's not about the cost.
Yeah. But we're, we're hoping the Secretary of State would open it up to public comment again, now that there, that this was the first run-through. I think we should provide some feedback on those fronts.
Anything from Corporation Council's office this evening?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I am going to move into item 16. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by mayor's, mayor and members.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino. Second by Councilwoman Iveyne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Going to the screen first. Anything this evening, Councilwoman Waldron?
Nothing from me, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilman Cavanaro?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilwoman Spino?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
And Councilwoman Iveyne?
Well, there were a few items in the news recently. One is the city took receivership of Yankee Peddler. So I was wondering if you could make some comments there and what the next steps are.
Okay, yes. So, I, I hope everybody got the email the morning that the hearing took place. The first thing I did, actually, I composed the email, and I waited for the judge to render the decision before I hit send. I did notify all of you via email. I hope everybody got it. I hate it when council members read it in the newspaper and don't get it from, yeah, exactly. So, so as you know, this is litigation that we bought, brought to the court in January of 2021, after three and a half years of stipulations, you know, unkept promises, you know, some additional attempts to work together. It became increasingly evident that the defendant in this case was coming up against a hard stop, where they weren't able to find their funding, nor were they able to meet any of the conditions of the stipulations that we entered into. So, Torrington Development Corporation is now the receiver of this property. What is the receiver? I'm going to turn this over to Corporation Council to talk about what the receiver's role is.
Yeah.
Okay. So as the mayor reported, the TDC now is the receiver. So, the first thing that they've done is they've retained Kevin Nelligan as their counsel, because they're trying to keep things separate, keep the TDC separate from the city side. So I'm still in the case as counsel for the city, but Kevin now will, Attorney Nelligan now, will represent the TDC. And the first thing that they need to work on is preparing a plan. And the statute requires that to be done within 90 days of the appointment. And then there's a court hearing on the plan within 120 days. So, that's in the works now. The TDC has already started to work on putting a plan together, really with a lot of the work the mayor has already done, about what, what do we initially want to have happen? The primary thing is securing the property and making it weather tight. Needs a roof, there's water that is still coming inside. Today, there was a tour of the building with, is it Deputy Commissioner Pugliese? Is that his name?
Deputy, DECD's Deputy Commissioner.
And, and Michelle Cook was there, and members of the...
Right, Melissa and Wayne.
TDC.
Yeah, right, TDC. To get a sense of what's, you know, really the scope of, of the work. And it's, it's pretty extensive, the work that will need to be done there. One interesting thing that happened in the meantime, one day, we noticed that there appeared to be some work happening in the back parking lot. There was a, it would appear to be a drilling rig. And this was a few, just a few days after the TDC was appointed receiver. And it turns out it was a company that had been hired by Jason Hospitality to do a Phase 2 environmental study. So the mayor and I took a walk over, and we were talking to the fellow in charge. He was very nice and confirmed there were people inside the building testing for lead and asbestos. They were drilling test wells outside to test the groundwater. And it was all for, for a Phase 2. So we're not exactly sure what that means, except that it may mean that Jason Hospitality, despite the appointment of the receiver, is continuing to look for financing. And the Phase 2 really is part of that. So they didn't get their mortgage. They were denied the mortgage by Hanover Bank. And the, I think the reason we think is because the, the bank wanted more collateral than just the building itself. And apparently, I guess, Jason couldn't come up with that quick enough for them. So they were turned down for their mortgage. But when we went to the hearing in front of Judge Lynch, their attorney requested that they be allowed to come back within 120 days, or any time after the 120 days, to ask that the receivership be terminated if they were able to come up with financing. That's in the statute anyway. They can do that anytime anyway. So it wasn't like they were asking for something they weren't entitled to. But that's really what our thinking is, that they're continuing to spend money, do the Phase 2, and, you know, maybe find money someplace else. But we'll just have to wait and see what happens. So...
Part and parcel of that, if I can just add, when we brought this action against Jason Hospitality, we also went to SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office, in anticipation of receiving the, the receivership. And the council at the time did approve or authorize me to make application for a grant to cover a condition, conditions assessment report. That condition assessment report will look at everything from roof, you know, structural beams, you know, the interior conditions, exterior conditions, and formulate a report that identifies where immediate investment is necessary to stabilize the building. Obviously, the big concern from the moment we brought this action was fire code, life safety code violations. Those will also be a part of the scope of those services. We are working with Jamie Sikora. The council also, sometime after approving the grant application, and the last time we did our on-call engineering services, provided or gave us authorization to utilize those on-call engineering services for this purpose as well. So the grant will cover the cost, but the city will be the, the grant recipient and the lead on those condition assessment. All of those conditions will be a part of the report that gets filed with the court. So, simple answer is, the receiver steps into the role of the owner, does not own this property, steps into the role of the owner, and can do anything that the owner may need to do to secure the property. The only limitations to their authority is, anything over $25,000 would require the approval of the court before it is expended, and would require three quotes. We're accustomed to that. Our limit is $10,000. Once this report is done, the receiver, the city is still very much a party to this action. We are still the plaintiffs of the action. So we're still, our, you know, finger on the pulse of everything that's happened. And we will be part and parcel of the formulation of any recommendation. The reason I reached out to the Deputy Commissioner of DECD to come and tour the building is, for obvious reasons, from the outside of the building, you really don't have a good frame of reference as to how much demolition has occurred, how much water intrusion is happening, you know, how much the conditions are deteriorating. And my immediate concern is, as we're sitting here in 90-degree weather today, we know snow is going to happen in the next four months, and we want to make sure that the roof is safe and secure and doesn't collapse with any heavy wet snowfall. So I initiated the conversation with Deputy Commissioner Pugliese to talk about what programs are available and what would be the fastest, easiest way for Torrington Development Corporation to access funds to secure those, those infrastructures.
Are we at risk at all, the monies that we have to invest to secure the building? What is our means of collecting that back?
So, anything that the TDC spends becomes a lien against the property, and there's a pecking order? So, because there's really a lot that could happen. Until we get the assessment that the mayor's talking about and see really what's involved, it could be that the conclusion is, it's, it is prohibitively expensive, and the building has to come down. That's the last thing that anybody wants to have happen. But it, but it could. And when you think about weighing all the costs and benefits, where might you end up? So that's why we have to be very careful about doing these, the assessments, the evaluations, and determining how much it's going to cost. The receiver also has the authority to sell the building. So do maybe, who knows what, secure it, picks up, picks it up a little bit? You know, there's been some discussion maybe about some of those storefronts under the arches right on Main Street. Maybe just get those to a point where they can be rented to generate some income. We haven't gotten that far yet, but just kind of thinking about things. And then maybe offer the building to sale, market it and try to sell it. And when it gets sold, there's a pecking order that says who gets the proceeds. And cost is number one. The judicial department always takes care of itself. The, the last person to get any money would be the owner. So all of the costs that we would spend, we would recover, provided the property is worth enough, you know, breaded, has enough equity. And that's why I think as we go along, we'll need to be careful and keep an eye on that.
Okay. So technically, at this point, as a receiver, are the city's responsibility, is the, is the TDC a separate, a wholly separate entity than the city of Torrington?
Yes.
Okay, so they are the receivers?
They are the receivers.
But whatever action they take, even if they misstep, it is not on the city, correct? It is on the TDC?
That is correct.
So their responsibility as receivers is to get the building up to code, essentially, or...
So any, anything that is necessary, necessary to abate the conditions that qualified it as abandoned or blighted, yes. So all of those expenditures.
Getting it up to code, or is it...
Yes, yes. Yep, I'm sorry. Yeah, the simple question to that would have been yes. Yeah.
I understand there's legal, very strict legal definitions of all these things. I get that. Okay, but in general, that's, their role right now is to get it up to code. It's got nothing to do with the viability of that as a property or as a rent, as, as a hotel of a functional and profitable hotel. a functional and profitable hotel situation. I mean, it's none of that. Right now, it's simply stabilizing the building as it is extent right now.
That is the first 90 days, absolutely. And within that 90-day period, when we get the conditions assessment report back, when we access the environmental Phase One, Phase Two, whatever work has been happening. And I say "we" because I feel this is a collective effort. The city is still the plaintiff in this action. We have a very vested interest in making sure that whatever recommendation goes to the court, we certainly as a party, a plaintiff to the action, can have input as to what the judge hears with ultimate disposition. As you heard, the all expenses that are incurred to stabilize the building and do any work we can to maybe do a request for expressed interest, to see if there are any developers out there that might be interested in investing in the property, get reimbursed first. And whatever is left after the sale would go to the, to the current owner. Or if the owner strongly advocates for the return of the property to the owner, that owner is still obligated to pay the receiver and the city of Torrington any expenses that we incurred as a result of doing this.
Does he have any discretion as to the cost of what these repairs would be? If TDC says it's going to cost $40,000 and he says, no, it should only be $25,000, that's not?
Not his discretion.
TDC does it?
Well, except to the extent that the court has to approve the plan.
Right.
And all the parties to the action have an opportunity to weigh in on the plan. So they could come into court.
And challenge.
And challenge the plan.
The cost.
Not just the cost, but even whatever the plan is, but yeah, including the cost. And, you know, and frankly, as the mayor said, I think the city and the TDC are very much on the same page. But technically and legally, the city could object to the plan.
We could.
You know?
Understood.
But it's all, and it's up to the court to approve the plan. So the TDC can't just go off on their own and, I mean, there's some things that they can do. The statute says that they shall immediately preserve and protect the property. But then, as the mayor said, the main focus of the statute is to abate the conditions that led to the appointment of the receiver in the first place. So, yeah, their charge is not to develop it. And, you know, when I talk about that commercial space on the, on the first floor under the arches, I think part of the thinking was maybe at least see if there's something we can do that's quick and easy to generate income to help. But the main focus is abate the conditions that led to the appointment of the receiver.
To begin with, right?
Yeah. I think the easiest, yeah, I think the easiest way to look at the receiver is really they are agents of the court. So really, they're doing all, they're executing all of the things that the court found were conditions that created the abandoned bladed property. So they do that work and they report back to the court. And then we have an opportunity to weigh in, just as the owner would.
So it could be getting back to the whether they can object. It could be that the plan is submitted and one grounds that they could point out to the judge is that that's beyond the scope of the statute.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
But, you know, right now, who knows?
Well, at the very least, you got us off the schneid in this ADS-BN, so.
Yeah. Yeah, well done. It was a long process.
It's been, yeah, it has been a lot of hard work. The legal team that we had together, Wes Horton, we brought him in to, to take a look at all of the constitutional issues. Kevin Nelligan did an amazing job working, you know, on the ground team with Corporation Council, Judge Magistrally, and Vic Michelle before Judge Magistrally stepped into the role. And Torrington Development Corporation, you know, we've had a few people in and out of those, the president's seat, you know, but people like Victor Michelle and Peter Herbst, who stood with us and said, let's go after this property and let's do what we need to do. It's too important to the city of Torrington. It's too important to Main Street, economic development. It's a job generator. It prevents us from being a tourist destination. So on every level, it's really an important piece of property for us. I'm glad we're at this point, but there's still a lot of work to do.
How should we look at it? We're on first base now?
I would say, yeah. I would say we rounded first.
Okay.
Maybe we have to slide into second.
There certainly is a lot more work that needs to be done. And there's, and again, there's no guarantee. You know, we all would like to see the Peddler restored to its past beauty and attraction, but there's no, there's no guarantee, really. But we're doing, we'll do the best we can to get it there.
Great. I applaud your efforts. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Oh, you said two. There was another matter?
Two. Okay. Any updates on Stop &amp; Shop? Oh, there's the bus terminal was.
Yes.
Opening of the bus terminals ended on a high note.
So, so I just went to Stop &amp; Shop before the meeting, and it's pretty clear that they're not going to stock that store between now and November 2. The shelves are already clearing out. We are not having, I had no luck dealing with the parent company of Stop &amp; Shop. In my conversations, I did make contact with the owner of the plaza to let them know that not only the empty space that currently exists in that plaza, but now with Stop &amp; Shop closing, with that Taco Bell building collapsing in on itself, they really need to step up. I've invited them out to the city of Torrington. They're actually out of the Maryland area to come and talk with us about what their options may be. But clearly, the conditions of the plaza are not, not great. And if we want to attract another grocery store or another box store, they're going to have to make a little investment to make it more attractive. The bus terminal, so Northwest Connecticut Transit, as many of you know, any of you that travel up and down East Main Street, had been housed at this postage stamp property on East Main Street, way too small to increase the fleet, which meant we were sort of hamstrung not being able to increase services. And so in 2013, one of the first studies that I was reviewing was the development of a regional transit authority after 11 years, when we finally were able to get into this new building. I can tell you that was another end of a pain point for me, because there's nothing more frustrating than watching the demand for public transportation increase as an aging community, as a community where families are not buying two cars to sustain, you know, their transportation needs. And a good portion of our population don't own a car at all. And they are walking to and from this grocery store. They're walking to and from work. So public transportation and Stop &amp; Shop is a perfect example of that. So being able to get into this larger space, DOT owns the facility, Northwest Transit occupies a portion of it. The rest of the building is in the development phase of what those other uses would be. And this now affords us an opportunity not only to increase our fleet, increase services throughout the region, but also move closer towards the state's goals on changing from fossil fuel to electric vehicles. So, yeah, it's, it's big news.
Yeah, very nice. Thank you.
You're welcome. I think I hit up all the council members. And so I'm going to do the public comment before I ask for the executive session. So do I have a motion to open the meeting to the, oh, one more thing before I off the business of mayors and members. Just as a reminder, tomorrow is National Night Out for council members, Board of Safety members, the elected officials. If you are intending to participate, Chief Baldwin and many of the command staff are meeting, opening the various neighborhood visits at Nutmeg Fudge. And I am sorry, I have to look up the time. So the kickoff would be Nutmeg Fudge at?
5:30.
Do you have that? I'm sorry.
Yeah, that was my understanding.
Okay.
City council gets all the ice cream they can eat.
4:45. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Yes, city council gets all. I don't know. So, and it's always a fun night. I unfortunately cannot join this year. I have another commitment. But it's always nice for these neighbors to see the people that are making decisions for them and get a chance to hear what some of their concerns are relative to public safety. All right. Now I'll move into the motion for opening the meeting to the public. If I have a motion?
Come on.
Thank you, Councilman Iveyne, Councilwoman Spino. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anybody from the public wishing to address the board on council on agenda items?
I would, mayor.
Oh, okay. So Donna Isley, yeah.
On behalf of myself, I'd like to thank the council for approving me to the reappointment of the Fair Rent Commission.
Thank you. That's it. Nice. We appreciate your, your work on that, that council or the commission. It's brand new. It's, it's a lot of, it's a steep learning curve. And we do appreciate all of the members that have stepped up to the plate on that. All right. Anybody else from the public wishing to address the council on agenda items only?
Here, just under comment by mayor and councilman.
Yes.
Just a reminder about the Purple Heart Ceremony on Wednesday?
Thank you. So for any of you that are looking to add that to your calendar, National Purple Heart Day is Wednesday, the 7th, and our ceremony begins at 10:30 out in front by the flagpole. All right. Moving into item 18, I need to add this to the agenda and then 19 will be the actual vote. So I will entertain a motion to add Section B to the agenda this evening. Thank you, Councilman Kevin Arrow, second by Councilwoman Spino. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So 19, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Section CGS, Section 1-200-6 Subsection D, to discuss contract lease negotiations for property located at Vista Drive, what we all know as the city's landfill. And I would like to invite into that executive session Corporation Council Magistrally, Public Works Director Ray Drew, and our Facilities Director Jamie Sikora. Thank you, Councilman Kevin Arrow, and second by Councilwoman Spino. And all in, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Waldron, do you want me to call you in on my phone?
Sure. I'm waiting for the call.
Okay. It's 8:10 and we'll.